Are you having comments, changes? Okay, favor of a motion to approve minutes from the previous meeting. Got a second?
Good.
Got a second? Commissioner Boyd, on favor? Motion passes. I think this time we need to recognize we have a new member to the commission, Dan Nolett. Welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service. All right. Financial report.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say a few words because at the end of the meeting today, we're gonna talk about the budget amendment for this year, so we'll talk about how we think the whole year's gonna turn out, and talk about the preliminary budget for next year. So if you look at the, go to the statement of accounts, which is the second page in, you know, this is through January, so I mean, if we were exactly on budget, we'd be at fifty-eight percent of revenue and fifty-eight expenses, fifty-eight percent of expenses. You can see that we're at fifty-five percent of revenue. That's pretty good considering the fact that we don't have any of the third quarter contribution net from the, from the city or the county. So revenue is just about right on what you would expect it to be. In fact, it's really over if you would've put in, once we get the city and counties portion. Go to the next page, down at the bottom, total expenditures. Again, if, we'd be at fifty-eight percent if we were right on budget. We're at forty-nine percent below because of the fact we didn't have a commissioner for a couple of, oh, not a commissioner, but a director, a director for a couple of years, a couple of months. And there really are no unusual, I would say, anything else to talk about, you know, through the month of January. So we do need, we do need a motion to accept.
Thank you for your report. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept a minutes.
Commissioner Collier's made a motion, and Commissioner Ruby has seconded it. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Construction sureties.
Yep.
Okay, we gonna address those?
Looks like we, we don't have the PowerPoint up yet, but I can just run through these. So Kellyanne Ann Griffith, DBA Henness Springs Properties, you're East Eden Ave. We had them come through last month to reduce their letter of credit from one hundred fifty thousand to thirty thousand. I realized I didn't have you all renew the letter of credit for an additional year. So that's why I'm bringing it forward. So I'm just asking that we do renew that letter of credit in the amount of thirty thousand for an additional year. Do we wanna take a motion on that, or do we just wanna run through them all first?
It's pleasure of the chair.
Yeah. Let's, let's just go through them.
Okay. Peevlar Moving and Storage, South Town Street Extension, renew the cash surety in amount of twelve thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents. This is for that storage, storage facility that's on South Town Street. They, they essentially have their CO at this point. There's just this connecting road that the city has asked to do. It's like that frontage street there that they need to finish. I did speak with the owner. They basically said they were on hold because of the winter, and they plan to finish it up this spring. So I am asking that we renew it for one additional year. I think if we get to this next year and it's still not complete, then we need to think about cashing that surety and finishing it ourselves, so. And then Jody Sharp, Hunt Farm.
Is there a? Is there something we can do besides for just the whole year? Like, is there a season that it's, that it makes sense to do that in so that we can maybe hold his feet to the fire more than just a year?
Yeah. I mean, I, I did speak with the city engineer about this, and he was open to doing it for six months rather than the year. I don't think that there's anything in our regs that prevent it from doing it six months. It basically gives you the liberty to do it for a full year. So I don't think you're required to do it for the year. So if you wanna look at six months, that would get us to about.
The idea of holding his feet to the fire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that would get us to about September, and that would still give us time to cash the surety before we get to twenty twenty-four to do it. So I'm certainly agreeable to that.
Well, that, that road out there is not, because it hasn't been accessible. People aren't used to going up and down it. We're talking about the section of the road right in front of him, I think is what you're talking about, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
So it's like, I'm not, I'm not personally in any hurry as long as we get it done.
Right, but for how long? I mean, we can, we can not be in a hurry forever. And I'm just saying, let's give them a, a time to get it done, or else we'll cash that surety.
The, the letter of credit is only good for, would be for good for the next twelve months, correct?
Well, we would, it's a cash surety.
Oh, okay.
So.
You could sit there for a long time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Technically, it could.
That's why I was trying to understand where we're, okay.
But it would be depreciating in value. You know, you always run that risk of us not having enough money in the account to finish it if we continue to put it off for.
And you say you talked to the owner there, or the primary person?
I did. I spoke to the owner. And they did seem like they had intentions to do it this spring. So I think, you know, September would be perfectly appropriate to assume that they're gonna do it in the spring. It would give them the spring and summer. However, if you wanna do it for a year, since that's our typical standard.
If, if we're going to do it, we wanna do it in good weather, so I would recommend us in July, June thirtieth date, so we'd have warm weather to execute it ourselves rather than picking the end of September, and the cold weather comes in. If you're gonna, if we're gonna do it because we wanna get it done.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that. Just extend it to June thirtieth.
Is that giving them proper amount of time to get it done?
Yeah, that's a lot of time.
Well, I mean, people have schedules. Well, I don't.
Yeah.
He can go back and ask for a change.
It's, it's whatever you all want.
I'd like to keep it at six months. I think September's not too late for a contract.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think we still have time, yeah.
And there is the possibility to ask for a further extension if there's demonstration of good cause.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Yeah, I, I think September is more reasonable.
Okay.
Okay. So do you just wanna put it for September one? Yep. All right.
Did we address the other one?
Yeah.
Nope, I will go through that one now. Jody Sharp, Hunt Farm, Section Six. So we dealt with Section Five last month, so this is a new phase of the project. He's looking for the planning commission to accept the initial letter of credit in amount of a hundred three thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty cents. Final grading and street-related items includes ten percent project contingency from construction bond estimate, and authorize the chairman to sign the developer construction contract. He is doing the twenty percent bonding option for this. So typically, we see the hundred percent bonding, but, so the full cost of the project is five hundred, five hundred eighteen thousand dollars, four hundred seventy-four. This is a perfectly acceptable option that we have in our subregs. It just does not allow him to record the plat and start selling lots until the full completion of the project, rather than you can start kind of piecemealing it with the hundred percent. He understands that he, he was planning on doing it that way anyway, so that's why he's doing the twenty percent. I wanted to make the commission aware.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
So we need to vote on the construction sureties, and number two, we changed that to September the first. So with all those changes, we have an option, an option, a motion?
Make, make a motion that we follow those by, by September first.
We have a motion from Commissioner Collier. Commissioner Boyd's got seconds. Motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Subdivision approval. Lisa?
We have Christian Bromes has applied for the subdivision of twenty-one thousand four hundred thirty-nine point six square foot parcel of land located at seventy-four Duncan Hill Road in Danville. The property is zoned RM two. And with this plat, we basically had three non-conforming lots that were existing. And the client is asking to combine. Why do I have the wrong one? That's okay. I just grabbed the wrong thing. The client is asking to combine those lots and redivide it into two lots. We had some questions here in that parcel number three, which has the existing single-family home unit, did not have enough width at the build line for the initial proposed lot. So they had to rearrange the lot lines a little bit to allow this parcel number three to be seventy square foot, or seventy feet, excuse me, at the build line. And they also had to make a notation because this is an RM two zone. Single-family homes are allowed at the R one A standard in this RM two district. So keeping this at a seventy-foot build line would mean that it has to continue to be an R one A standard lot. So even though it is RM two, they could not come back and tear this single-family home down and rebuild a duplex or something, something to that effect. So that had to be noted on the plat. What else is it?
Lisa, where is that, where is that on this plat? Or is it not on the copy that we have, that noting?
What is that?
The RM, RM one.
The RM two zoning?
The RM two conversation you had. Where is that on the?
It's right, it says Christian Bromes deed book, and that says zoned RM.
Asking, the, the note has been added in the corrections, but it was not initially on the plat. So it will be added prior to recording, yeah.
Okay.
We also asked about where the utility easements are located. We asked that they crosshatch the drainage on the side, that they note the setbacks on the lots, and that they note the roadway or the road width for Duncan Hill, which was not initially on the plat. So together with all those suggestions and corrections, it's ready for final approval.
Okay, we have a motion.
You're doing this one for a motion?
Yeah.
These plaits are pretty unique and might benefit from separate motions.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
Have a motion to accept the subdivision approval. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Manning, seconds, the motion, any further discussion? All in fa, all in favor of the motion? Motion passes.
All right. So next stop, we have Petrie Ventures LLC has applied for the subdivision of two point seven four seven acres, known as one oh three and one oh one Brethett Avenue Junction City. The property is zoned RM three. I'm gonna do my best to try and explain this situation. So the purpose of this plat is to create eleven condominium units. So you can see six units on one oh one here. Those were previously approved in July of twenty twenty-two. They're currently under construction. If you drive by there, you can see six framed homes out there. So they're looking to add on these five additional condominium units. The reason one oh one is on this plat is there's this small parcel right here that they're looking to bring into one oh three to help with the access. However, these condo plaits are showing as single-family homes. Essentially, they're detached units rather than attached. The reading of the ordinance for the RM three zoning districts is that condominiums are a permitted residential unit type in the RM three zoning district, but it does require three to eight units per building. So my interpretation of that would be that what they're proposing here is not meeting those three to eight units per building because they're single-family detached. So I wouldn't find it permitted in the RM three zoning district. However, we have approved several developments of this type since the new zoning ordinance was adopted in January of twenty twenty. So essentially, what I'm recommending with Henry's blessing is that we would consider this one oh three proposal here, these five units would have a vested right. They did secure funding based on the fact that the adjoining property was developed in the same vein and was approved somewhat recently after the zoning ordinance was approved. So that's what I would recommend. I do also recommend that the planning commission take some time to consider how we wanna handle developments of this nature going forward. I think we could get additional applications of this nature. We have developments all over the city that, that look like this. It, it might have been a permitted type of development in previous zoning ordinance iterations. So I do think it's something that we need to consider. We either need to look at the zoning ordinance and consider whether we wanna change it and make this a permitted type of development, or if we wanna draw a hard line in the sand and not allow this moving forward. But like I said, I think for this application, we look at, as they have a vested right, and we should look at approving it with any conditions that you might want.
Kayla, are they intending to build those five units detached, single-family, like the six that are already there today?
Yes, yes.
So this would be, make it consistent with the plot of ground that we're talking about.
Yeah, it would make it consistent with what you see on one oh one. So one oh one is here, these six units. Like I said, those are already under construction. They've been approved.
They don't look like that when you drive down there.
No, they don't.
They, they don't. They're not, they're not next to each other. They're spaced.
Yeah, they have about, I think they have nine feet in between is.
So they're detached.
They are, they're detached, yeah.
They haven't been built to what the plat shows.
Well, so the plat is showing condominium lot lines. These are not showing structures. They're showing lot lines. So they're proposing about thirty-five hundred square foot condominium lots. So a person that purchases one of these lots would be purchasing some green space, some area for patios, as well as the detached structure. So it's not to the roof line like you typically see with a condominium. This is to basically a thirty-five hundred square foot lot that's acting as a condominium. They have the common space. They're structuring it like a condominium with the HOA and everything else that is involved with that. So it's, it's a unique style development. But like I said, the, this commission has approved several since the new ordinance has been adopted, including the one oh one.
But it's your, but it's your reading that it doesn't conform with what the ordinance says?
Yeah, so I can read it again. Here's what the ordinance says for the RM three zoning district. It says condominiums containing three to eight units per building. So my reading of that would be that you would have to have three attached units minimum per building for a condominium-style development. I mean, they also, you know, for RM three, you can do two-family residential unit types, so you could do duplexes, but my reading would be that you couldn't do a single-family detached unless it's meeting the R one B district, which has a minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred square feet, so.
What's the difference between a single-family home and a condominium we approved apparently back in twenty twenty?
Well, we have different standards.
I mean, I'm looking, it doesn't look much different to the single-family home.
Yeah, it, it doesn't look much different. I think when you're driving by.
It's an XLAT, that's all you've got.
Yeah. The difference is that for a single-family style development, like if we were to have this be at the R one B district, it would need to be accessed by a public road. So the private road that they're proposing, that private entrance that would serve those six units and the five units would not be allowed. We would have a minimum lot size of seventy-five hundred square foot rather than the thirty-five hundred lots that they're showing. So it's, it's just held to a different standard. The density is the same. They're meeting density requirements as far as that's concerned. But it's just the way that they're going about it, of the smaller lot sizes that wouldn't be permitted. Smaller lot sizes and not being served by a public road. Now, we can allow multifamily to be in that same unit and have that private access road. I mean, that's what we do for townhome-style developments, apartments, et cetera. It's just the fact that they're doing them as a detached, single structure that's the problem.
Isn't it true they could build a fence between them, and they would be attached, and it would be a single unit for nine feet of them?
I mean, I think it would have to probably be a wall, not a fence, but yes, the commission could look at, at requiring that, at least having two units be attached. That was discussed at TRS. I know that the applicant wouldn't love to do that, but it's well within your rights to require that, to make it conform to the zoning ordinance.
Also, I'd like to hear what Ms. Douglas has.
Well, is there anyone here representing this development?
I'm here as a senior engineering, so.
Okay. Do you have an answer to why they removed the state roadway fence? Was there permission for that?
They, that, the highway roadway fence.
Yes.
Was a local law fence, put up there for access control, and it's been replaced with a four-board plank.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
It's been replaced with a four-board plank fence, which is an acceptable alternative for the state office company, as an access control there.
My question is, the state highway department called City Hall Junction and wanted to approve the fence. So evidently, no one got permission to take the fence.
I advised them that an encouragement department was required to work on highway.
But they didn't get one?
Yeah, I advised them as to what would be required to be put back. And so fence should come down, but at the same time, the state should be aware of it, and then the fence should be like a, so as far as I know, the intent is to put a back four-board plank fence, and obviously the state highway department, they were getting involved with having them make the back four-board fence where it's just clean up that front, and they talked about the brush.
So there is, or is it something they're doing?
I think they're helping out, but all along.
Okay.
Local law fence and brush.
Another issue is Brethett Avenue, which is not your problem, is still not been brought up to standard by the developer, which is now changed due to a debt. But they had a meeting at City Hall and promised with the contract that they were gonna upgrade that to, to the standard. So the mayor just wanted it clear that he is still not gonna accept that Brethett Avenue to maintain, and they're gonna have a lot of people coming in and out there, which is gonna be a lot of potholes and a mess and whatever. But he just wanted to make that clear today that until they bring that street up to standard, he is not gonna accept it for the city. So I don't know if the Petries or whoever else is involved in this, understanding.
I mean, Petries would be making the most of that certain things, just like.
Right, right. Right.
But just for the record, can you identify yourself, please?
I am in the wires. I work for the county, and my client is Petrie, as well as one of the ones who created the first thing. And there's separate property, there's separate property owners, but they are somewhat working in partnership.
Okay.
And the product that is built on this second phase of that will be the same building that the city on the first, that same floor plan.
I have.
I've made some comments and taken a few in some of the hurdles, but shall we understand that, I think Kayla is understanding very well what the circumstances are. Again, it's gonna be the same product that is built, and I just, sometimes I think you know, I'm a senseless world of stuff, you know, that what you're, the only word that says is that it's okay to take five units, squash them together, or patch them somehow, but it's not okay to build five units that have grass, not get grass.
In that square footage, yes.
So realistically, I mean, what would you rather have, you're a homeowner, you'd rather have separation? Would you rather your party wall be right next to your neighbor's party hall? To hear them knock on the wall, I mean, this is, I understand that, that it shouldn't.
Is there a conformance issue about the side setback then, if you wanna keep them separate? I think it's enormous, ten feet.
We don't have, because it's a condo plat, we don't have setbacks for the individual condo lots. We would have.
Because it wasn't intended ever to be there. There was never a conformance intended because they were intended to be on top of each other.
Yeah.
So what you said is absolutely right, Kendall, there. What would people rather have? Well, we have it in the zoning ordinance that people can have that with a single family, but in a bigger lot. Okay, we didn't, like, when the ordinance was written, it wasn't envisioned that somebody would build this in that size lot. That leaves us with two different issues today.
And there are, there are people that don't want that grass, and they want the smaller lot. You see it all around. But this particular location, like, wants to have them separate.
I'm, I'm dealing with it the same type of development, but a number of developers in different counties, and you know that there's a need for homes that can, that we can afford. There's sort of this smallest single-family home space that you can create, and there's a need to create affordable homes. And developers are always trying to figure out how many, how they can get more homes per linear feet of street. So this could either be, you know, the way we're doing it, association, and we're allowed to live on private street, but if, you know, I'm looking at doing the same types of things on public streets, and everybody's trying to figure out how to get this with a lot so that we can get more units on a street and it takes the cost. Or we can buy it, so, you know.
Do I understand?
As long as you're a developer, I mean, and you all can't control how developers operate, but you trust the developers to operate correctly, they want a brand, they're really nice neighborhood, so we put the homes close together.
Kendall, aren't these rentals?
It wasn't working anyway.
Kendall.
Kendall, aren't these, aren't these rentals, aren't these rentals are not for sale? Do I understand that?
So, so by them being a condominium, they could be sold into it. At this time, the developer has planned to retain those first six units, own them and rent them for some period of time. So that's what he's, he is, the first six units were, are being rented, as far as I know.
And you're.
But you have to look at it as if you could be dealing with six or eleven in this case.
And your private drive area there, what are the four areas are you putting building in there? Are they gonna be asphalt gravel or what? What are you all doing with these private areas here?
So we've, we created construction plans for the streets, sewer and water and all of that, and the city has been given those plans. And then I should think that in order to get a building permit for those first six homes, they would've had to have gotten a zoning permit, which requires some sort of a plan for what they're gonna do.
Do they get a permit?
They're actually not. I said that at TRS, but that was when I thought it could potentially be in the county. But their zoning permits are not required in Junction City. The planning commission might want to consider asking for some type of site plan to be submitted anyway. Just because as a result of this type of development, it's critical to review a development plan, make sure we have hydrants, look at the street plan. I think we're going to need to do a developers' agreement for the utilities that are going to need to be laid. So, it is important to get some additional details that a plat doesn't provide. But, like I said, Junction City doesn't require it, so the planning commission might want to consider asking for it so that they can provide that information.
And we've been very much involved in the first six, the construction of the first six homes and making sure that they were laid out and built according to our construction plan that we put together, a site construction plan. That's not always the case, obviously, but with this particular developer, I mean, as you can see, if you drive down the road and you look at those homes, they're perfectly aligned, they're perfectly spaced, they're at the correct elevations. And so, you know, we stake those things out and try to guide the developer and help them create those, you know, develop the project the way it was intended to be built. And if all goes correctly, you know, it will be a street that has appropriate slopes and drains water correctly and all of those things. And the same hold true for the next five. We've created a construction plan for that, for the next five.
Does he intend to asphalt them?
Concrete is what I think the driveway and the common area access road will be constructed with. I mean, he would have the option to do asphalt, I would assume, but our plan chose concrete.
Any other further questions? Not for Kendall, okay?
Thanks.
I see this as being two different issues, like, that we have in front of us. One is whether to approve or not approve or do something with this actual development. And the other going forward is the actual ordinance. Because now we've seen that unforeseen does not mean unforeseeable. Those are two different things, right? So, you know, we didn't foresee that somebody would do this within that ordinance, okay? But now that it's been done, we have to ask ourselves that this is what we want going forward. And if we do, then this is what we're going to get. Well, I think we've seen this before, I think with Premier Villages, is that what it's called on Crowder? They went from four to two to one. Yeah. I just think that if we're going to have a law, we ought to do what the law says.
If you wanted, if you, you're suggesting that you could change the law and make it match what we're doing?
Amen. I'm suggesting that we, at some point, I think that there's no purpose to have a commission if we just keep approving things that are not in conformance with what the law says.
And that's what amendments and revisions for those types of words and laws are for is, okay, so it wasn't done as clear as we need to have it done. Restate it, reamend it.
Commissioner Ruby, if the commission is inclined to accept your director's recommendation and take a kind of cautious approach and recognize a vested right, there's a way to structure a motion, which I think would draw a line in the sand and say, "The ordinance still says what it says. We recognize there's a vested right here. This developer made investments or secured funding based on a certain interpretation. We have that demonstrated by the fact that that interpretation was applied to the first phase of the development. We recognize that and that's why we're granting this. However, henceforth, three to eight units still applies for condominiums."
Until the, until it's changed.
Exactly.
As long as the ordinance is written as is.
I mean, and we don't have any pressure to change it. I think it's just a discussion that we might want to have. I might want to convene the advisory committee and we can discuss options. I mean, I think there's a better avenue to go down if you want to allow single-family detached housing with more flexible lot sizes. That's considered a planned unit development. And I think it's a more appropriate structure for this type of development rather than the condominium plats. But those are options that we can discuss. This also might be something that we want to draw a hard line in the sand. We are going to start going through the comp plan process. This could be something that we bring to the public and have it be discussed throughout that comp plan process and not... You know, I think there's a lot of different options at hand. So, it's really up to the commission to decide how they want to lead that forward. And I'm happy to discuss it with the advisory committee and we can have a further discussion about it at next month's meeting. But I, I think, like Commissioner Ruby said, these issues are somewhat separate. We have to deal with the application at hand and then we have to decide, moving forward, how we want to handle this. And that doesn't necessarily have to be done at this meeting. I think we've made a public statement that until anything is changed with this zoning ordinance, we're going to, we're going to apply it as seen here beyond this application.
Thank you. I think you summed it up very well. I totally agree. I think planned unit developments are a better tool for this type of... And why we got away from them, I don't know, but it's been, over the last several years, it's not something that's wanted to be discussed, but, and I think that's why people have created different ways to do the same thing. So why don't we give... I think that's something that maybe the advisory committee should look at, bring back to the commission and try to figure out a better way to achieve that kind of development in a more structured way, so you're not bending the rules.
Yeah, this got quite a bit of discussion at Tech Review. And we concluded basically, Michaela, agreed with Michaela, what she recommended, and that is based on a vested right, we would recommend going ahead and approving, you know, this as applied. But then, as a commission, we should look at, is there something different we should be doing, you know, going forward with different regulations?
So having said that, is there any further discussion? Do we need a motion? Can we get a recommended motion from him?
I think you pretty much got it.
I'm happy to restate that. What I kind of said to you was the recommended motion, but...
Michaela was saying something earlier about, you know, site plans, should that be in the motion or not site plan?
Yeah, I think, I think it could be one of your conditions of approval, is that you asked for a site plan. Well, I'm hesitant to call it a site plan because we would bring it through the commission at that point. But I think just some type of construction plan of, I mean, he already submitted a construction plan to Josh, but this goes through Junction, so we do not have a city engineer that will be reviewing this application. And we don't require a zoning permit, so I think it will just come to my office and I'll distribute to utilities and things at the fire, et cetera, and just make sure that there's no glaring issues as far as that's concerned. Unfortunately, we obviously don't have an engineer to review it, so Kendall will be certifying it for that, but...
So basically, we're saying, Mr. Lawrence or whoever, go in there and basically do what he wants to as far as finishing out these houses. He doesn't have to pave drives or roads or upgrade the water lines, which I'm hearing won't carry. If there's a fire as close together as they are, do you know anything about all this? Have you all talked with the fire safety?
So the, the water mains for these next five homes, we're proposing a new public water main be extended to serve these five homes. And I've submitted that to the city of Danville, plans for that. As well as a sewer would be a new public sewer to serve the five homes.
So that hasn't been even approved, right?
Hasn't been approved. I've submitted it to the city of Danville, Marshall Carrier, to review. And then he'll have to give me a letter back that I'll so forward to the Kentucky Division of Water and get a permit from the state for that.
So he didn't get his permits back yet, when he started doing it?
Now, the first six homes were able to develop without a sewer or water extension. So the first six homes, there's a water main both along Breathed Avenue and US 127. And the first six homes were able to tap the water main for service along 127. And likewise, the sewer line that was along Breathed, they just paid for taps and got their services off of that line. The way these next five are oriented, it makes more sense, just it's, it could be done with sewer taps, but it's just more, probably more economical to actually do public sewer and water extensions to get their services.
Nothing can be done until those approvals are...
The construction of the sewer and the water can't begin, I'll say that. And you all are, it's up to you all, I guess, or the building inspector, whether or not he wants to hold up a building permit until those things are in place.
It's already built.
Well, I mean, I will say that in designing the water main for this, these five units, I looked at what the fire department... So there's tests annually done on hydrants to show what the pressure and flow is at the hydrants. And I'll say that the hydrants on Breathed Avenue, which are fed in two different directions. One comes from the city, I'm talking about in the big picture. They're served both, from both directions, from Junction City and from the city of Danville. And the water and the pressure coming from Junction City isn't as good, but not nearly as good as what's coming from the Danville direction. But the hydrant there on Breathed Avenue is, these five units are within three hundred and thirty feet of that hydrant. And, which obviously you could pull hose from that hydrant. And I'm talking about the hydrant that's in front of Jehovah's Witness Church across the street from our proposed entrance. It seems to have, according to the numbers that I got from the fire department, which came from Marshall Carrier, city engineer, gave me numbers for the hydrants. And so I, in doing the hydraulic analysis for this new water main, those hydrants have enough pressure to fight a fire with. So, I mean, it...
I mean, that's city, that's city.
I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if somewhere further back in Shelby Green, because elevation rises. As you go to that north, northwest corner of it, there, it would be a higher elevation. So it wouldn't surprise me if those homes have weak water pressure or not adequate pressure to fight a fire. But where we are for this development, it's sufficient.
What size line are you depending?
Six. It'll be a six-inch wa, Breathed Avenue has a six-inch water main. The water main along 127 is a four-inch water main that goes through Junction City. The new water main that we're putting in for these homes is a six-inch water main. At some point, the city may decide to upgrade the four-inch line along 127. I mean, that's, that's just part of growth and that's what, that's what happens as people start screaming they don't have water pressure. Then the city does something about it and they put in a bigger water main.
We hear that daily, you know, I mean, they call and say two houses, residents can't take a shower at the same time, that's why.
Yeah, I mean, all of those issues are issues for the original subdivision developer. I mean, we're talking about two, we're talking about lots that were created a long time ago. And should we have all of the adequate, you know, should have all of the, you know, all of the utilities for these lots should be there. And they should be adequate to serve them. I mean, this was all done in the past.
But your building on these is a lot, that's why.
But they were, I guess, so your duty as a commission is to create subdivisions and make sure that subdivisions have
Yes.
utilities to serve the public. The lots were created a long time ago. And so, people buy lots assuming they will be able to have water pressure and be able to discharge their sewers to the sewer system, all of those types of things. So, the questions that we're asking about utilities should have been taken care of a long time ago. I mean, these are people who bought lots in the same way that anyone could have bought a lot.
That's your developer. I mean, the city hasn't accepted any of that.
I just don't know why we can, why we can rely on people who buy lots to upgrade utilities for a subdivision. I think, I don't know, just seems like we're muddying the water with some questions.
I'm saying, if you have a fire junction, it's not going to be able, they're a small fire department, they're not going to be able to get the pressure to put out the fire. So, that's just all I'm saying. Maybe somebody will, like you say, upgrade the existing line where you can get more pressure, I don't know.
So they're saying there's not enough pressure to output fires down there?
No.
Of existing buildings?
Right. And if you put them together, you're still going to have that issue, so I just think this wasn't thought out very well. But it's there and we've got to deal with it, so.
Any further questions for Kendall? All right, we're back to our, we had a, do we have a motion? We're working on a motion and...
Should the commission wish to approve, the motion might read as follows. "We approve this plat, subject to a vested right in the interpretation of permitting condominiums with one unit per building. Reliance on this interpretation is demonstrated in approval of a prior section of this development. This vested right is interpreted within the context of this case and the zoning ordinance development standards, including requirement of three to eight units per condominium remains in effect. Approval is also conditioned on the submission of a site development plan that would be available for administrative approval." Does this, would the site development plan address all of the infrastructural problems that we need to talk about? Or is it more of a construction plan or...
That would be my intent. I think, I mean, based on the fact that they're going to have to provide utilities to the five units, we could look at doing a developers' agreement to ensure that, you know, if for some reason Mr. Petrie wasn't able to finish the project, we would have funds to be able to finish those utilities and serve those five units that are going up. It's, I don't know, typically we do it for utilities and streets. This obviously won't have a street component, but I still think it's in our purview to do so. So, they could submit those construction plans along with a drawing that would address all those issues. And then we would go through that typical process. I would ask for a construction contract, I would bring it here. We would get the surety and go through that process with Mr. Petrie. So I think, I think that would be a good option, just to ensure that those five units receive the public utilities that are needed.
And so the approval would be conditioned on submission of construction plans and the execution of a developers' agreement? That's the motion.
Are we, I add to the motion that we will do this, but in future, Mark Laurie, Momma, I could tell.
He just said that, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Boyd. "The zoning ordinance development standards, including the requirement of three to eight units per condo, remain in effect. And this vested rights interpretation is confined to this case."
So we have a motion. Is that your motion, Commissioner Ruby? Commissioner Ruby has a motion.
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any further discussion with the motion?
Whose responsibility is it to make sure that a builder has utilities? Is it the city, is it the builder?
In what context? As far as if a subdivision is...
Yeah, or I mean, if we're saying there's not enough water pressure to put out fires, whose responsibility is to make sure that when we build something, there's enough water pressure?
That's, that's not the easiest question to answer. When we go through a subdivision approval, it's similar to what Kendall was saying. We, we try and, I mean, I don't think our signatures are sufficient right now for our utility sign-offs. But what we should be doing is getting utility sign-offs prior to any subdivision being approved. So, when we're looking at a subdivision and with Shelby Green, if we were looking at what the total density could be for that area, before we approve that, we should get utility sign-offs to say that we have sufficient infrastructure that can serve that area. And if we don't, then that's grounds for not approving it. So, it's not just, it's not just us. It needs to go through that whole process of having utilities in the city and us going through that. And that's where those signatures can come into play. Right now, we really just have them sign off for easements, not for availability. This is something that we've been talking with Marshall Carrier about. This is something that we've been talking with Marshall Carrier about, and we probably want to get that changed, updated, just to tweak the signature block a little bit so they actually approve availability, but that's, that's typically how the process should, should work. But at this point, it's, we've created a lot that they're going within the density of that lot, so it's kind of a, a complicated issue of saying that the infrastructure isn't there now, because it's not really on the developer that purchased this individual lot. It was really when the whole development was created that it should have been looked at, but...
To further comment, though, I think it's safe to say that there's a lot of homes spread across the county on county roads that aren't in subdivisions that don't have adequate water pressure, unfortunately, so.
All right, so we have our motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? We'll vote. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed? And we have a public hearing that's been withdrawn, so that takes us to our new business advisory committee report. We don't have one, but maybe, based on discussion we've had today, we may need to set a meeting for the advisory committee.
I apologize.
That's fine.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't need a motion on that public hearing. The advisory committee does not have a report, we can move on to the budget.
Well, I, do we need to at this time maybe set up a meeting for the advisory committee since previous things we've discussed in this meeting that may need to be addressed, or do we want to wait till a different time to do that?
Yep. I can send out an email to the advisory committee following this meeting and trying to schedule something for the next week or two.
Okay.
I think it would be ideal to meet prior to the March meeting so we can discuss it.
Okay. Thank you. Budget committee report.
Oh, yes, we do. Michaela has pulled together a budget amendment, number one, for fiscal year 23, and also a preliminary budget, which is due to the city and county in a few weeks, I believe, or for fiscal year...
The county is due Friday, the city is due...
Is for fiscal year 24. Both of these were run by the budget committee a week or two ago, and so what I want to do is run it by you today. I don't know if we have anything to throw up on the screen, or if I'm just going to be talking from the handouts.
Yeah, I, I just left it to the handouts, I thought it would be easier for you all to look at.
All right, so what you've got is, you know, the detailed budget sheets, the multicolored ones. You can reference these, I'm going to be talking to the single page, black and white primarily. But what we're going to be talking about, you know, in the center column of the multicolor spreadsheet is our budget. That's the original budget for fiscal year 23. Right next to it, it says, oh, fiscal year 23 budget amendment number one. That's basically what, oh, Michaela, and I guess you would say the budget committee is forecasting how we're going to perform for the total year. Okay, so it's basically, you know, seven months of actual data plus five months of forecast. Then the final column on the right is the budget, the preliminary budget, oh, for, for the next fiscal year, 24, that needs to be turned into the, the city and county. So at that point, you can set that page down, and you can reference it if you want as we go through this, and I'm going to be talking through the single page document. And all it really does is compare this fiscal year, this budget amendment to the original budget, and then the proposed preliminary budget for next year to what we're currently forecasting this year by only looking at changes greater than $1,000. Okay, so we're just looking at things that have a sizable impact on our budget. So if you start out in section A, what we're going to be doing is comparing our original budget for 2023 to the budget amendment number one. And in the first column, you can see it says revenue, and underneath that it says fiscal year 23 budget, and that was $193,300. That was our budget for revenue for this year. And then if you go down the columns below that, that shows the changes that we're making to get to what we now believe is the revenue we'll have this year, and that would be budget amendment number one. And you can see that we're calling construction fees, which is line item number five in the detailed budget, if you want to look at it. We're calling the construction review fees up by about $3,000 to the original budget. Zone change and flume applications up about $2,500, subdivision plats up about $4,000. But then, oh, site plans and zoning permits are actually calling down compared to the original budget, based on our seven months of experience and, and what Michaela believes we're going to be looking at. And then all the other pluses and minuses added up to about $1,020. So the, the budget amendment that we're presenting here to the commission is for revenue of $196,530, which is an increase of about $3,230 over the original budget. Now, if you go to the next column over, under still this, this grouping of A, and look at the expenditures, the original budgeted expenditures for this year were $219,925. And if you look at the first four items listed, salary and wages, FICA, retirement, health and dental insurance, they're all, they're all under budget, forecasted to be under budget because we didn't have a director for several months. If you add those four items up, they add up to $19,560. So that's a, you know, quite a bit of under budget because of the fact we'd had no director for several months. We're calling the computer software up compared to, to budget, Michaela bought some software for the computers. And then this line item that's gas, fuel, and room of $1,292, oh, that's the money we paid to bring in the outside interview candidate from the state of Washington when we were interviewing for a new director. And then there's some all other changes that add up to $895, so the new forecasted expenditures for this year is $203,756, or about a $16,000 reduction from the original budget, again, due exclusively to the, the lack of a, of a director. Now, if you go down below that, on item B, this is the budget, so now we're going to compare the budget amendment, what we think we're going to do this year, compared to the preliminary budget that we're going to turn into the city and county here shortly. First of all, I'll start out in saying that this time, we are now asking, we are not asking for any more revenue from the city and county than we did in previous years. I'll talk a little bit more of that a little later, but right now, we're not asking for any more than we have in the last several years. And so the only changes to revenue, you can see we're starting out, oh, this column with $196,530, which is the revenue we're forecasting for this year, and then the changes that we're making to that to come up with the preliminary budget is, it's, there's a little conservatism here, though, but we're calling down the construction review fees by about $1,500, zone changes and flume by 1,000, some division plats by about 2,000, but zoning permits, we're calling up about $2,000 compared to this year, based on, again, Michaela's expectations. So our preliminary budget that we're turning in to the city and county for 2024, or fiscal year 24, is $194,030. And if you go over to the next column, the expenditures, again, we're expecting to end this year at about $203,756, and then the changes that we'd be making to that, what we spent this year in order to get to what we're expecting to spend next year. Again, the first four items, again, are all due to the fact that we now do have a, you know, a Michaela onboard, and so we're, we're calling back up salary and wages, FICA, retirement, health and dental. And if you were to add those four numbers together, it's $20,385. And also in there, I think, is a 3% increase that was put in from a budgeting standpoint. Obviously, the personnel committee will decide exactly what that number is, but this is just a budget placeholder. We're calling advertising up about $1,000, because we're expecting with the flume and that we're going to be, we will be asked to be doing the, the advertising for the public meetings, that will be providing all the input to the flume this year, so that's why we're calling advertising up. Michaela believes we, we should be considering getting a, I would call that a large scanner, what would you call it?
Yeah, a large format scanner. This is something I, I feel strongly about putting into the budget, so we can scan in all of our plats, plans, everything, all of our large documents, that way we have everything digitized. I think it's time that we do that, and with our revenue being, with our expenditures being down in the previous fiscal year, I think it's a great time to make that type of investment for us moving forward, but...
So at this time, the money's in there for the, this large format scanner. Computer hardware, not expecting to purchase it on the upcoming budget since we purchased it last year, so the hardware's being called down. We actually have a reduction in attorney fees for our commission and the board of adjustments of about $1,320. And since we won't be interviewing any candidates, hopefully, for Michaela's position, we won't be spending the money we spent last year to bring in the interview candidate. And then some all other changes were like $882, so the resulting projected expenditures are $225,861, or an increase of about $22,000 over this year when we were without a director for a couple of months. So that's kind of summarizes the, the revenue and expenditures for what we're planning on turning in for 2024. If you drop down to the very bottom section, it's, it's, this is what we're looking at, our beginning and ending balances. And so the very first column, you see it's titled fiscal, fiscal year 2023 budget. This is what we thought the year was going to look like when we put the budget together. We thought we were going to start the year with about $81,000, $80,955, that we'd have the revenue that we talked above for a budget of $193,300, we'd have the expenditures that we had talked about a budget for a budget, above for a budget for $219,925, and we would have ending reserves in the bank at the end of this year, when we put the original budget together, of about $54,000. If you drop below that, that shows how the $54,000 would have been broken down. About $19,000 would be our 10% operating reserve that the city and county wants to kind of hold, and the difference would be what we always call a legal reserve, in case we would always be sued for, for anything. The center column, which it says fiscal year 2023 budget amendment number one, that's what we now actually think the year's going to turn out to be. We actually started with a beginning balance about $10,000 stronger than what we originally budgeted, I don't know if you guys remember that or not. But the, the final audit, we actually did better in the last several months than we thought we would, and so when we get the, the formal audit in, we actually started out with more money in the bank than we thought we would this year. And then we had the revenue that we've talked about above, $196,350, which is about $3,000 better than budget. And then because we had no director, our expenditures were quite a bit less than what we had in the budget, and so we're now forecasting to end this year with about $83,000 in the bank. And you can see how those numbers would break down below. Instead, of course, the, the, the ending balance this year of $83,515 turns into the starting balance, beginning balance of the preliminary budget for next year. So you see, what we would be forecasting then is next year, for the preliminary budget, we'll start out with about $83,515 in the bank, and we'll have the, the revenue that we spoke of above, $194,030, the expense that we talked about above for the preliminary budget of $225,000, and it will end up the year with about $51,000 in the bank. So at this point, I'm going to kind of remind the commission that a year or so ago, we talked about at what point do we ask the city and county for more money? Some of you will remember that discussion. And the number that was recommended by the budget committee, the number that was adopted by the commission, was $40,000. So this ending reserve that we're forecasting for next year, $51,684, since it's below that $40,000 trigger point, we're not, we elected not to ask for any more money this year. Now, once we do a forecast, like we're doing now for a preliminary budget, and if that number were to fall below $40,000, let's say when we do the fiscal year 25 budget, we would then be going back to the city and county and saying, we've now hit the tripwire, and by the way, we shared the $40,000 number with the city and county last year, but we've now hit the tripwire and we need to ask for more funds to, so that we don't deplete this, get the ending reserve too low of a level.
So we'll remind them this year that...
Again.
That we intended to, but we're not going to ask for more money.
No, last year, we told them we didn't, we didn't think we were going to have to ask them.
Okay, good, so we'll just remind them.
Because, see, last year, we thought we were going to end at $54,000, see, the last, you know, we put into the preliminary budget. So we didn't, we didn't, we just warned them. We just said, you know, we're not asking for any more yet, we haven't for many years, but we've been slowly drawing down this reserve, and once we hit $40,000, we're uncomfortable and we're going to be starting to ask for more money. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
We had an excess, and we continued to have each year a little less, but still an excess. So we don't feel, we feel comfortable with our, our budget to, to that point, and we're trying to iterate to them that we don't, we don't feel it's necessary to take additional funds until we get to this point, but at that point, we will request additional funds to, for us to maintain our financial stability or goals that we feel where our thresholds are.
Right. So any questions either of the detailed sheet or of the summary sheet?
No, but thank, thank you for your good work.
Gloria?
Yes.
I would personally like to thank Terry, he has been a huge help guiding me through this, so I really appreciate it.
I would like to thank him again.
So we do need a, a motion on both the, to accept both the budget amendment number one and the preliminary fiscal year 24 budget submission.
Having said that, we have a motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Davenport makes a motion to accept. Second?
Yes, second.
Okay, Commissioner Noellette seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you again, Commissioner. We really appreciate what you put into that. All right, Personnel Committee report.
No Personnel Committee report.
Other new business?
None.
None. Any announcements?
We met with three entities last Friday regarding the comprehensive plan. We plan to take a proposal to the city and the county next week, asking for funding. Everyone seems to be on the same page that they would like to ask the Bluegrass Ed to do the comprehensive plan. Of course, this isn't finalized, but I am going to be bringing that proposal to the city and county next week and just asking to secure that funding. So hopefully, if everything goes well, I think I will go to Junction City and Parable as well, but we're not asking for funding from Junction City and Parable, so it'll be more just to let them know. They've been involved in the process, both mayors, as well as one of the commissioners from Parable, so that's, that's where we stand. Hopefully, if everything goes well, we can start this thing sometime in March, maybe early April, so we are making progress here, but is there any questions on that, or? All right, that's all, yeah?
When are the ethics statements due, close to March?
We do not know the date in March, just that it's due in March, so I would encourage you to get those to us sometime next week. I think Lisa's notary is expiring tomorrow, so...
I've got a question about that, because we turn those in and went, whatever, November, wouldn't they be on a fiscal year? Everybody's on a fiscal year.
They, I believe, are on the calendar year.
That's what the ordinance says.
The ordinance says calendar year.
And I know we just filled them out.
The government operates on a fiscal year.
Yeah. Yeah, I know we just filled them out, and we have to fill them out again for this next calendar year.
I took mine, I just went to the county and did mine there, and she, she notarized it there.
Okay. I think Lisa still wants a copy, so if you do do that, just, right, you still want a copy? Yeah. So you can just email her one, or drop it by, or whatever, but, yeah, Lisa won't be able to notarize it after tomorrow, so you probably will have to go to county to have it notarized.
Now, the only, the only one I think the city folks have gotten is from the county. We haven't, is that the only one we're going to get, or do we have to turn one in for the city, too?
So far, it's just the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that all the announcements? All right. Thank you all for your time. We can, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Got a motion to adjourn, second?
Got a motion to adjourn, second? All right.